Good afternoon, this is a regular meeting of the Cameron County Commissioners Court. Tuesday, the 20th day of August 2007 is now approximately 5:30 PM. As we do all meetings, we will start with an invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which we will have you all lead us into pledges, alright? But we'll let you know when. Today's invocation, Andreas Lewis? Andreas? From Good Shepherd Church.
Thank you. Let us pray. Father, I want to begin this evening by thanking you for the county commissioners and the county judge for this court. Lord, I want to thank you for them and the time that they give to recognize you and your influence and the invitation to be an influence in this court tonight, this Commissioners' Court tonight. Father, we pray for wisdom tonight. We know that there are decisions that need to be made. And Father, I just pray that your blessing will be upon the meeting tonight, that those who come to express their needs would have freedom, and the Commissioners will be filled with wisdom and understanding to know what priorities need to be established for this county to prosper and to be blessed. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen?
Thank you. You want to take it to Lady Pups to do the pledges?
Yes.
Lady Pups? I'll do the Pledge of Allegiance, right? We're gonna do the US flag first, and we'll do the Texas flag, alright? So y'all start off whenever you're ready.
(Inaudible)
We have one item under Public Comments, which is to recognize the National Championship Shetland Team, Lady Pups from San Bernito, Texas. And I'd like to have Commissioner Godza present this proclamation to you all. And so, this is Commissioner Godza, so go for it.
Okay. Stand right in front of me.
And the coach too. I'm gonna read the proclamation that has already been passed by the Commissioners' Court. And the Commissioners' Court passed this resolution on the 7th day of August of 2007, consideration and authorization to present the San Bernito Lady Pups with a resolution for placing first in the 2007 Pony National Slow Pitch Tournament. Whereas the San Bernito Lady Pups placed first in the 2007 Pony National Championship Slow Pitch Tournament in Slidell, Louisiana, which took place July the 11th through the 14th of 2007. And whereas Destiny Hernandez, Jackie LaBelle, Mariah Sanchez, Audrey Huerta, Michaela Garcia, Ariel Garcia, Kalen Reyes, Araceli Arizmendes, Alexis Vasquez, Leanne Ramirez, Alisa Quiroz, Haley Lopez, all contributed as team members to the Lady Pups 2007 National Championship. And whereas Greg Hernandez, Crystal Hernandez, and M.R. Garcia have coached and guided the team through two championship seasons. And whereas the San Bernito Lady Pup All-Stars won back-to-back championships in 2006 and 2007. And whereas all team members are currently students in the San Bernito Independent School District. Now therefore be it resolved that the Cameron County Commissioners' Court wishes to honor and recognize the accomplishments of the San Bernito Lady Pup All-Stars this season, and encourages them to continue with their dreams and aspirations for many years to come.
Judge and Commissioners, I thank you for honoring our team, San Bernito Lady Pups. Right now, I would like to share with you a cheer that went constantly with us through the whole tournament, for motivation for these girls to put us where we were at.
There's a cheer squad too, okay? No, I'm just kidding. Thank you all very much for being here, and it's truly an honor for all of us to share this day with y'all. So if this is over for y'all, if y'all want to leave, you can. If you want to stay till 9 o'clock at night, you can do that as well too.
It's their second day of school.
But they've got school tomorrow, so y'all need to scoot out. I hope to see you again here next year, alright?
Thank you, congratulations.
Oh yeah, they're still excited.
We need a cheer like that for Commissioners' Court.
I think we do have a cheer like that for Commissioners' Court. If there's no objection from the Court, there's three items that we'd like to take out of order, because these folks have to go to other meetings, and they're part of the regular agenda. And then we'll come to the Veterans Officers, then we'll start off with the regular part of the agenda. Item 50, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Request From the Brownsville Beautification Committee. Pete, are you gonna address that?
Joe? Judge and Commissioners, you should have a request in your packet from the Brownsville Beautification Committee. I think we've got some pictures of monuments they want to place at the park right across Gateway Bridge. I believe the total cost of the project is $90,000. $40,000 have been secured each from City of Brownsville and from UTB, TSC. And they're requesting $10,000 from Cameron County to be able to close the funding gap that they have. Mr. Rubio is here from the Beautification Committee, in case the Court has any questions. My recommendation is, if the Court decides to approve this, that we can fund the $10,000 from Gateway Bridge in next fiscal year's budget. I don't believe they need the funding by the end of September, so that would give us an opportunity to fund it with next year's budget.
Pete, did you talk about putting some kind of identification for us?
Yeah, they've agreed if we do pledge the $10,000, they'll include our logo along with the city's and UTB's logo.
Alright. Move by Commissioner Godza, sign by Commissioner Tamayo. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Item carries. Thank you, congratulations. Item 58, Consideration Approval of Change Order Number 1, 2007-08-030, in the amount of $15,516.25, and using the Betterment Fund for the Isla Blanca Park Boat Ramp. Javier?
Yes, sir. Judge, Commissioners, what this is, when they're preparing the foundation for the rest room, for the boat ramp, they found under the ground a old swimming pool that was there. And when we did the boring for the soil, it wasn't found, because it was off to one side. So what they had to do is they had to take out that whole concrete pool. They had to go down certain depth to pull everything out, so this is what this increase of cost is. They're gonna put a mat down, put some gravel, and then they're gonna come back and then lay their fill material.
Okay. Any questions from anybody?
Motion for approval?
Second. Move by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Wood. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Item carries. Item 59, Consideration Approval of Designating a Funding Source for the Construction Improvements of this helipad on South Padre Island located in Isla Blanca Park?
Judge, Commissioners, I had emailed members of the Court a breakdown of the cost. It's a little bit over $12,000. And Jim has it. The total is $12,986.79. What this is, includes the two warning beacons and the wire markers. These go on top of the light poles that are around the area of where the helipad is, to warn the pilot as he's coming into the approach area for the landing zone. The other cost is $5,406.79, which is a turnaround. What they're gonna do is they're gonna build out around the existing road for the shoulder area, so they can get their emergency equipment in, be able to turn back around and get out at the site. And then we're gonna build a ramp from the road to the helipad site, which is gonna run us about $3,080. And we're gonna do that in-house. The two items that we're gonna do in-house, of course, is the construction for the turnaround and the ramp. Public Works is gonna help us with the turnaround construction. The other, the item number one, which is the warning beacons, we have to contract AEP, since it's their poles and it's their wires, they have to put up these markers for us.
Were there any, the town of South Padre was not gonna be helping us with any of these costs?
Yes, there was. In the interlocal, it specified what we were responsible for and what South Padre is responsible for. And these items Cameron County was responsible for, to complete the project.
In accordance with interlocal?
Yes, ma'am. And Pete and Javier and myself have been communicating, and we found the money within our budget, park budget. And I believe he has a budget amendment for this evening, to pay for the cost.
I'd like to move to approve.
Second. Move by Commissioner Benavides, second by Commissioner Godza, to approve. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Item carries.
Judge, I know you talked about three items, would you consider item 62 also?
Yeah, we just got that one. 62, Consideration Discussion of a Joint Memorandum Agreement with Cameron County Coastal Impacts Task Force. Dilbia?
That's Bob is here.
That's the notes I gave?
Yes. The notes that I gave you right now, passed out before the meeting to each Commissioner and to Dilbia, are the notes from the first two meetings, the first one of July the 20th, and the second one of August the 20th of this year. And there's the minutes of the two meetings, and also attached is the task force with the individuals' names, their telephone number, and their email addresses. And I will allow Bob Corneliusson, who is our Vice Chair, to proceed with the presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner. I think I've said hello to everybody, except Commissioner Benavides, and hello and good I want to thank the Commission for considering this task force, I think the coastal task force, talking particularly to the General Land Office and agencies up in Austin. This is what they're looking for, from counties and areas. They want a regional agreement, regional prioritizing of these coastal issues, and also coming forth with plans that cross boundaries, cross city, got city hall, and the Commissioners' Court and everybody. When everybody's on the same page with a project, vis-a-vis Bahia Grande, and some of the other coastal issues we have, beach nourishment, it gets easier for the General Land Office to let go some of that money. There's gonna be a lot of it. There'll be a lot of that money. The state is gonna share in new oil royalties in years to come, and it is gonna be a significant amount of money coming to the coastal counties of Texas, and to Texas. We asked all the members of the committee, as Vice Chair, to go back to their attorneys and look over the MOUs, and tell us before today if they had any problems with the MOU, and there were no responses. I believe that there is one amendment to the MOU that is agreed to, will be agreed to by all parties. And the next step for us to get down the road is to get these MOUs agreed to in these city halls, and at the navigation districts, and of course here at Commissioners' Court, and get on with our business, and put together a plan for Cameron County.
I know that we received the original copy of the MOU that the committee sent, and we ran it through legal, and legal, and I sat down along with Marty, because Marty was here and was at the meeting, and we looked at the terms and termination item, which was number six. And the previous one said that if one member pulled out, that that would be the end of the task force. And how Ms. Jeffries worded it, it allows for a member to pull out if they wish, but the task force continues as formed until a majority of the members of the task force would want to dissolution the task force.
That's a good point, Commissioner. I think that all the members would agree to that, that makes perfect common sense.
And when we got that change made, we sent the email to all members that are listed on the attached list behind the notes of which we passed out, and we have not heard from any of them yet, of them having a concern with the revised draft that we sent.
That's correct. I expect this to be pretty funtry. I think that the folks that were appointed to this committee by these various entities are very interested, and everybody's gonna pay their own bills, and we've got a good group of folks, and everybody's attending the meetings, and y'all are welcome as well, of course. And we hope we accomplish what the Court has asked us to accomplish.
So they have no opposition? None of these members have any opposition to the change?
No, ma'am.
No, ma'am. Sorry, no, ma'am.
And GLO has been at every meeting, they've come in, and they've been our advisors at the meetings, and have kind of held our hand and led us through the process.
I will recommend to you that if you have questions, if you can't attend the meetings, and the minutes are a little cryptic sometimes, if you want to understand the tenor of our discussions and where we're headed, Marty is your resource for that. She will be taking the minutes and calling the meetings, and be our continuity, also our archive here, and keep us, get these minutes posted correctly. And we have discussions about public input, of course, into the committee, and being inclusive as possible. We are not little feckdoms there. We're trying to, as a group, represent that portion of Cameron County, to make recommendations to you on a course of action on coastal management. And that's our mandate.
And what I will do is, after every meeting in which the minutes are prepared, I will put an agenda item on, so that we can include those minutes and make sure they become part of the permanent record for us, okay?
Motion for approval? Second.
Move by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Benavides, to approve the memorandum agreement. Any, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Item 2, Presentation by South Salinas Veterans Service Officer, Veterans Healthcare Needs for Veterans of the Rio Grande Valley Study.
What you have before you is, you should all have the booklets containing the recent study that was done by Booz, Allen, and Hamilton, on the needs of the valley's VA healthcare needs for us. This study, as I'm sure you're aware of, has been ongoing for about 60 years. The cry of the veterans has always been that we need a hospital, and we need it quick. Now, some of the comments that have been made by the Department of the VA have been that, A, there's no veteran population really in need, you have very few numbers; B, it's not a teaching hospital that you need. And so they have used every excuse in order for them not to actually build a VA hospital. About a year and a half ago, with coordinates of valley veterans' alliance groups, came together along with several veteran advocate groups, and they came before Senator Hutchinson. And she went ahead and heard their cries, and she commissioned the firm of Booz, Allen and Hamilton, to go ahead and prepare a study, which would give us actual figures and numbers in some of the care that the veterans need here in the valley. The result of this study is what you have before you, the VA Healthcare Study for In-Patient and Specialty Outpatient Services in South Texas and the Coastal Bend Area. This study is divided into two sectors. One, the first sector is the Coastal Bend Area, which we won't get into, because that has to do with Corpus, and everybody on above. Our concern is Sector 2, which is the Lower Rio Grande Valley. And here, this is where we all differ, because if you notice, Sector 1 has a population of 13 veterans, 13,000 veterans enroll in the VA healthcare system. And here in the valley, it's 15,000 veterans enroll in the VA healthcare system. These figures, again, are wrong, mainly because there are certain priority groups that VA takes into account. And these are priority groups 1 through 7. And basically what this means is, these priority groups from 1 to 7, each veteran either A, has a service-connected disability, or B, they have very little income, and they're able to meet the criteria in order to be treated by the VA. What is not shown here is everybody else, that because of income level, they don't qualify for VA services. Or because they have good health insurance, they don't need the VA. It also doesn't take into account all the veterans that simply, you know, don't want to deal with the VA for whatever type of reason. We also have veterans that, and you've heard in a presentation about a month ago, that we have veterans in Mexico. Those figures are also not added in here. So these figures are, always fluctuate. So what they use, the study agency used, really is not what we were looking for. But just to give you an indication, this is what the VA looks at. The veteran population in the valley is naturally is veterans in need of medical care, either service-connected or non-service-connected. Service connection is you come out of the service either with an illness or an injury, anything traumatic that happens to you in the service. Non-service connected is, as mentioned, you do your time in the service, 40 years down the line, something happens to you, you're low-income, VA will, as promised, will be able to take care of your medical needs. That's what they mean by non-service connected. What I will go through is some of the options that the study group mentioned, and I'll also give you some of the reasons why they're ranking. If you notice, if you, option 1, to build a small VA hospital, here, this is between Harlingen and McAllen, we really don't care where, but that is rank number 6. And on the booklet itself, it gives you the page number, page 54, the rationale, and the ranking. Now, this is what the VA mentioned, why a small VA hospital would not be needed. And this is one of the best things that we're asking for. What it does, it puts the quality of care at risk, as per the study group, mainly because what they're looking at is inpatient acute care. Based on this, you don't have enough veterans in need that need surgery, or that need to stay in the hospital over two days. So in here, this is why, if you have a medical staff, if you have surgery done, ICU units, you would not have the doctors available for them. And one of the logics that they came up with is, would you rather have a doctor that performs services five times a day as far as surgery, or one time every five days? So their logic is that the hospital care would not be advantageous to our veterans. The other option is for contract with a healthcare system, or health plan to provide inpatient and specialty outpatient patient. This ranked number 5. And this is mainly because you have a lot of veterans with different types of illnesses. If you contract with several outpatient agencies, you might have one for diabetes, one for physical therapy. So the risk of the veteran going in there and actually being charged is also at high risk, simply because of the diverse illnesses that they have. So this is one reason that they shied away from some of this. The study is trying to make the best possible medical care available to the veterans. And this one, you might have somebody that runs through the cracks, and might have to pay out of their own pocket. Option 2 is a contract with McAllen Medical Center for In-Patient Care, and this is colocate leased space for a VA specialty outpatient clinic. Now, but this ranked 2, or 2nd. What they're talking about here is that they would specialize a wing, either with McAllen Medical Center, or maybe even Harlingen, Valley Baptist. The problem here is that the wing itself would only take care of veterans. Now, if you don't have the veteran population, as the study indicates, you're gonna have a lot of empty beds. If the hospital itself is at capacity, they cannot use the wing as provided to for the veterans. So you might run into problems with either hospital saying, you know, "We need the space, but we can't use it." So even that, this is what we would normally consider a future veterans' hospital, and then hopefully it would go on board. The next one is a contract with Valley Baptist in Harlingen for In-Patient Care, and expand Harlingen VA, they call it C-Box, Community-Based Outpatient Clinic, or Specialty Outpatient Facility. This ranked number 1. This is the one where they're saying that with the expansion of the VA clinic, which is supposed to be completed in December, more services are going to be available. A lot of the clinics that our veterans are going up to Audy Murphy for are gonna be available here. The surgery will be done at Valley Baptist. So you can more or less see that the study is indicating this is where you want to start. Once the surgeries are done at Valley Baptist, now you're actually coming up with actual numbers that you can use to rationalize possibly a VA hospital down the future of the road, mainly because of the cost. As you all want to know, that right now the VA, even though it's providing a lot of the best care for our veterans, is in need of a, I guess, major overhaul. So until they fix the problem, I think this is one of the routes that the, was it the firm wanted to go, and is possibly one of the best. The others are creating a hospital within a hospital. It's called a C-Back, Community-Based Acute Care. This is, this ranked number 4, again, is with the same logic, that you are building a hospital within a hospital, but the fact that the civilian hospital, again, may be over the number of personnel, or was it patients, VA would again be in conflict, because nobody could use the wing, as they say, except for the veterans. So this is why the ranking, again, was, you know, lower. Again, create a hospital within a hospital with McAllen Medical Center. This is the same thing, ranked 3rd, it's the same thing as the above, but the contract would be with McAllen, since you've got two options, one in Harlingen and one in McAllen. The next slide indicates what we do as far as, you know, Cameron County, our office does. We do have a DAV van that takes veterans out to Audy Murphy. It's only one van, that is- It's only one van, that is offered to us by the GSA. It operates in Willacy and Cameron County. The number of years it's been in operation, twelve years. When I first came onboard as a service officer, the Commission's Court asked me to seek for some way to transport our veterans out to Audie Murphy at no cost. So two years later, or a year later, this came into being. A lot of coordination with the VA hospital at Audie Murphy, working together with my counterpart in Willacy, we were able to get this service done. And it's a help, but it's still, we're a long way off from actually providing the service that is needed. Who coordinates the van is between the service officer from Willacy and myself. There's no cost for it, it's a GSA van, so they provide the van, and they give us a brand-new one every eighty thousand miles. It doesn't cost us, the gas, the maintenance, everything is part of the GSA, so we really don't worry about it. The only thing that, our two volunteer drivers, and these are only two for the entire Cameron County and Willacy area, we give them a stipend of sixty dollars so they can stay at a hotel. But it comes out of the Disabled American Veterans Fund, so it doesn't really affect We do take, the pickup times, it runs twice a week, seven in the morning on Wednesdays and nine o'clock on Sundays. Now, the van, the number of people we can take is nine, including the driver. It used to be fifteen, but because of accidents that were happening throughout the United States, we did have a fifteen-passenger van, but because of the weight distribution, there were a lot of accidents, so they reduced it down to nine. So unfortunately, that's what we've got to work with.
So do you find that at times you have more than nine?
Oh, yes, yes, unfortunately...
So what happens then?
And on that, sometimes we do get into trouble, because we're not supposed to let them on, but depending on the appointment that they have, we sometimes break the rules. But we have been advised not to do that. But I believe that we need to get our people up there any way we can, so sometimes we do take them, if it's an emergency. The other option is that one of the patients that's going up there, they're willing to give up their seat, if they're just going for a checkup, and the persons are going for, they're going to be intern at the hospital. Oh, by the way, the hospital, if you see, it's ALMH, it's Audie L. Murphy Memorial Hospital. The pickup points, it starts here in Brownsville at Jack-in-the-Box on Price Road in Frontage. Then it goes to Jack-in-the-Box at Sam Houston on St. San Benito. The next stop is Valero on Business Seventy-seven and N. Carey, and then the final stop is in McDonald's, you know, by the Frontage Road as it goes on to Kingsville. The one-way travel is five hours, depending on the traffic. So once they get there, the van returns the following day after the last appointment, which could be two-thirty, three o'clock. This is why I have it arriving between seven-thirty and eight, eight o'clock, or eight-thirty at night. Sometimes it's even longer, depending on the last appointment. So we normally try and get our veterans to go ahead and see if they can be seen earlier. These are just the, the next are just the activities that we've been doing, actually pushing for a VA hospital. On the sixth, we met with Chairman of the House Committee, Chair Congressman Bob Philner. Then on Tuesday, August fourteenth, I had a private meeting with Congressman Chad Edwards, who is the Chairman of the VA Appropriations Committee. Both Mr. Philner and Mr. Edwards mentioned that they are behind our effort to get a VA hospital. We have it on their word that they will pass this legislation, and Congressman Edwards mentioned that he doesn't have a problem with allocating the money. This is what he mentioned to everybody present, so we're hoping that they go ahead and do that for us. On Monday, August tenth, the twentieth, there was a meeting by Congressman, or Senator Hutchinson, detailing the results of the VA study. Now, we've got to remember that this is just a study. My question to Congressman Ortiz, you know, Inojosa, and Congressman Philner, was what would be the results? How are they going to vote based on the results of this? Does this study have any emphasis on what they were going to allocate, if we're going to allocate anything? They mentioned that it was just a study. What they actually do is going to be dependent on the veterans of the valley. I'm sure you know that they're still pushing for a VA hospital, but we had, after this, one of the recommendations by General Richard Sanchez. He mentioned to the group that still wants the hospital to start thinking outside the box. And the reason for that is VA right now is aggressively pushing for the expansion of the VA clinic in Harlingen. The problem there is that it took five years for the appropriations to come in in order to expand it from its personal location next to the regional, to the RAC Center. This took five years. They are recommending that the expansion of the VA clinic, that's going to happen already, the money's already there, but within the next two years, they're going to go from thirty-eight thousand square feet to fifty-eight thousand square feet. Then the following year, by two thousand and ten, they're going to go from fifty-eight thousand feet to a hundred thousand square feet. Well, that's fine and dandy, as was the General Sanchez mentioned, but where is the money? You know, government, it's not going to be done overnight. So what he's recommending to us is that we keep in mind that the expansion of the clinic is a step in the right direction. We're going to be giving actual figures, we can come back to our congressman and say, "We have more acute care needs than you actually predicted." Now, some of the services that are going to be offered because of this clinic, once this is done, they are predicting that ninety-eight percent of our veterans who are going to Audie Murphy is going to be eliminated. You're talking about a lot of veterans that no longer will have to go to Audie Murphy. This is the key that they're asking. They want to see the immediate results rather than wait for something that may take ten years. So the study itself is recommending that we take care of the outpatient veterans that are going up to Audie Murphy. The acute care is only two percent from the valley, which approximately makes about two hundred veterans that are going to Audie Murphy and being seen for a two, three-day stay. So this is, I think, that this is the step that we need to take, but at the same time, we need to keep pushing for, if at all possible, the VA hospital, if it's ever done. But this expansion, this clinic, will give us those figures that we need in order to actually come back to our congressman and say, "Now is the time for you all to move." My responsibility here is to make sure that they do pass the allocation for the expansion of the clinic from its current eleven, it's already going to go to thirty-eight. We need to make sure that they do allocate the money for the fifty-eight and the hundred thousand square feet. That in essence is the presentation of this, and I'm open for any questions, if you have any.
Sal, on the volunteer issue, where the VA, or not the VA, the Veterans of Foreign Wars pays the sixty dollars, that's the Disabled American Vets?
It's a fund by the Disabled American Veterans National.
But even with that, they can't make ends meet when they go to San Antonio?
No, what they do is, we made arrangements with A, the Fort Sam, and/or Lackland, which goes around the system, and the Motel Six offers them a rate of thirty dollars. Once they get there, they get a meal ticket, so they can have breakfast the next day. Yeah, sixty dollars doesn't cover it, but this is what, you know, they asked us to do, mainly because of the amount of the budget that they have for us. And again, where there's only two people, so these people go constantly, so they're more or less used to it, it's not right, but, you know, it doesn't come out of our pockets. At one time, I used to have to go ahead and solicit funds, so we could, we were able to raise about three thousand dollars, then the DAV would kick in the other three thousand. So it's a six thousand dollar budget for the Cameron County, Willacy.
Anybody have any questions? Do I hear a motion to acknowledge Sal's report? Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Benavides. Any further discussion?
The only comments that I would like to make, Sal, is that usually, we know we want the hospital, and we know we've been pushing for the hospital, and in being able to do that, usually the first step is having an independent assessment of needs. And I think that, you know, as incomplete as this instrument might be, it already still, though, justifies and quantifies the need for a facility in the area. So at least we're there.
I agree. We're getting, we're beginning to see the light, but we've still got a lot of work to do.
Right.
So with the cooperation of the rest of the Veterans Alliance and the rest of the Veteran Advocate Groups, we're still going to be pushing for more. We're not satisfied with this yet, but it's a step in the right direction. Thank you.
Sal, thank you for all the good work that you all do. Does a motion, a second, no further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, item carries. Consent items and travel items, are there any items that any member of the court wished to discuss separately?
Judge and Commissioners, on item number three, we passed out an agreement that was prepared by our legal department. The contract amount in the agreement is the correct amount, it is fifty-eight thousand four hundred and twenty-three dollars. What is in your backup, in your packet, does not include a thirteen thousand dollar allowance for the replacement of the deck and the removal of the insulation. The fifty-eight thousand four hundred and twenty-three is within the budgeted amount that the Adele probation has for this project.
If it's needed to be replaced?
Correct.
Right.
Their allowance.
And it's within budget, you said?
So move.
Second.
On that item.
Number three.
Any other comments pertaining to the consent or travel?
I had a real short question about item number twelve, Judge.
Item number four?
Twelve, twelve.
No, item number four.
Okay, let's take item number four out to discuss separately, item twelve to discuss separately. Anything else?
Sixteen?
Sixteen?
Seventeen.
Seventeen?
Eighteen.
Eighteen?
Nineteen.
Nineteen?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three? Any others to be discussed separately? Do I hear?
Twenty-eight, did you say?
Twenty-three.
Oh, twenty-five.
Let me read them out, the ones that I've been asked to consider sep, that we've been asked to consider separately, item number four, twelve, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty-three. Are there any others? All right, do I hear a motion on all the consent items and travel items, with the exception of those aforementioned?
Someone?
Moved by Commissioner Wood, second by Commissioner Gatsa. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Do I hear a motion to go into executive session?
Move on.
Moved by Commissioner Benavides, do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Gatsa, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries, to discuss one item? Confirmed Commissioners' Court Legal Counsel concerning Cameron County versus BFI Waste Collection and Others, Cause Number Two Zero Zero Five Zero Seven Three Nine Zero Five Dash A, BFI Waste Services of Texas LP and Waste Management of Texas, Inc. versus County of Cameron, in the Thirteenth Court of Appeals, Corpus Christi, Texas, Cause Number Thirteen Zero Six Six Two Three, CV, and BFI Waste Services of Texas LP versus County of Cameron and Red River Service Corporation of Texas, Inc., Case Number B Dash Zero Five Dash Two Seven Nine, for discussion on status of case mediation and possible settlement pursuant to Code Section Five Five One Point Zero Seven One One A and B. Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Gatsa. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item forty-one, or really, forty-two A, Confirmed Commissioners' Court Legal Counsel concerning Cameron County versus BFI Waste Collection and Others. Do I hear a motion to acknowledge report of counsel? Moved by Commissioner Wood, second by Commissioner Gatsa. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Please note that Commissioner Tamayo was not present in the executive session deliberations. Item four, back to the consent, the ones that we pulled out, item four, Consideration Authorization to Enter into an Advanced Funding Agreement between the State of Texas and Cameron County for Construction of a Parking Lot at the Los Indios Free Trade Bridge Facility.
Pete, on that particular item, the state doesn't come on the table with any money at all?
Yes, eighty percent.
No, that's federal.
Okay, yeah, it's coordinated border infrastructure funds, which is federal, but they're sampled through the state of Texas. So it's eighty percent fed, twenty percent local. Now, the figures that are in there are estimates, I'm pretty much certain that the final costs are going to be much lower than what's in there, because we're going to do the project as a fourth account, we're going to do the work in-house, and we're going to get reimbursed, but those are text dot numbers. But it is an eighty, twenty, the twenty percent then becomes fifty percent Cameron County, twenty-five percent Harlingen, twenty-five percent San Benito, so...
Do they need to approve before we can, no?
No.
Our interlocals are in place for that?
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Gatsa. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item twelve, Consideration Authorization for Preliminary Plat Approval for Bass Lake RV Park Subdivision Precinct Four, being a subdivision of two point three eight acres of land, being all of Block Six A, re-subdivision of Blocks One through Eight, including Adams Gardens Subdivision B, Cameron County, Texas.
Oh, Mr. Inos, so my question on this, in looking at the backup material, indicates that they're going to have a septic system. I'm assuming this is going to be some type of engineered septic system?
That's correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Because obviously, the lots are not large enough.
Yes.
So a system to accommodate more than one?
Yes. And those are all pre-engineered, and from the engineer that's in charge of the project?
Okay. Thank you.
Do I hear a motion, any other questions? Hear a motion for approval? Moved by Commissioner Wood, do I have a second? By Commissioner Tamayo, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item sixteen, Consideration and Authorization to Execute a License Agreement between Cameron County Parks and Recreation and Mike Hernandez Hernandez Events for the HEB Crunch Tour Promotion at Beach Access Number Six.
I wanted to pull this item, Judge, because there is, aside from relieving us of any liability with this agreement, there is no benefit to Cameron County. And this is a for-profit group that has put in the events together, and the same would go for item seventeen, I know we're on sixteen. But I know that in other venues that are presented, example, we have organizations that use the airport facilities, we ask for some money, we ask for the insurances, we ask for, you know, not having any liability for what might be encountered there, and, you know, I just wondered why we have so many events on county property on the island by for-profit organizations. I would have absolutely no problem if this was a nonprofit organization, but if we have for-profit organizations doing these events, minimally, we should be asking for an application fee of some sort, if not a use fee. When we do these things, we take up staff's time, we take up legal time when we ask questions about them, and they all cost us money. And yet, we just kind of approve them and they do them, and that's it. So I just wanted to bring that item up for discussion to Commissioners' Court.
Do we have to approve these two today? Or can we defer them for a week and then...
Judge, I think the promotion is set for Monday, so...
September the third.
September the third.
Which is this weekend?
Whatever. What is the HEB Crunch Tour? What is it?
Nacho cheese dip or something.
And they're not donating those funds to any group, or they're, I can't believe they're keeping it for themselves?
There's no funds associated with this at all, to the county.
No, I know, but to them. Are they going to be making any money on these things, or are they just, it's like a giveaway? It's like an advertisement?
It's a promotion on new nacho cheese chips, and they're going to be passing them out in drinks.
Okay, so really, they're not, other than getting some free advertising, they're not benefiting per se, dollar-wise, are they?
No, sir.
Well, it's, I mean, if we have an airplane fly out of the airport, we charge them to allow them to use the airport to take off and have a banner going around the island with, you know, Polaroid or...
That's a good point.
You know, I mean, I just, I mean, we need to be...
What the judge is getting at, when they do that with a banner, they're getting paid for that banner and...
Well, I guarantee you that...
Hernandez is getting paid here.
Mr. Hernandez is getting paid well for this event.
Doing the crunch.
I mean, he's hauling a camel all over the state of Texas.
A camel camel?
A camel.
Oh. I see.
A camel, that's what it is. Well, what are the wishes of the court? We can deny the execution of the license agreement, if that's what the court wishes.
What kind of expense is the county incurring?
Well, the expenses would be general expenses by use of staff time, legal time, review and contract, and that sort of thing. And what I want to address you is, I think it's a little late on this particular application to do anything about it, but if you want, we can look at or examine... But if you want, we can- we can look at or examine presenting to the court a possibility of either an application or, as Commissioner Garza suggested, a use fee. Uh, it has to, in order to do that, it has to be consistent with what your reasonable expenses are if you're asking for an application fee for a license to do something. And- and- but it can be done, and we can look at doing that. The one thing we'd have to look at is it'd be subject to GLO if it's on the beach. I'm not sure we'd have to look at if we have to run it through, pass it by the government land office. But I- other than that, we can certainly look at it. But I think it's a little late to do anything on this one.
Well, it's not late because of Commissioners Court, because it's just on the agenda for us.
That's correct. It's- it's not late because of anything you did, it's just the way it's presented to you. But if you don't do something, they're not going to be able to do it on Monday.
I hate to bring this up, but I suppose, I guess, Judge, this is another example of no policy in place or a policy that's not being implemented. I'm not aware of any policy that we have for this type of.
I don't know of any policy, but it- but I know that the Parks Department has routinely, when it's a license for like a day or two, like this one, I think it's three hours, and somebody just wants to use the beach, they- they enter into a license. What you do gain, the county does gain, is control and know- you know, knowledge of the event so that there's some control and ability to, you know, to know what's going on and have law enforcement if need- need be, rather than just have people out there doing things without any control whatsoever. And we do get liability insurance by doing it to cover our deductible. So we do gain something from it, but we can look.
Richard, is this an annual deal? Is this a first ti- or it's a first time that it's seen that? Commissioner, it's the first time. We get a lot of these requests. Um, a lot of times they're for the- the flats on the bay side, and they're different events. Some of them are annual, like the kite festival and the windsurfing. Um, but this one is the first time. And I can tell you that the county's getting ready, or the parks is getting ready for another request from a movie wanting to film some areas on the beach. So we do, the Parks Department does get a lot of these types of requests.
But it's not a three-hour event, okay? This is a full-day event. Setup time starts at nine a.m., teardown time ends at five p.m. So, you know, I mean, I don't want to hear this three-hour thing. You know, and it involves a number of tents. It involves supply trucks. It involves, you know, branded vehicles that are allowed to park there. You know, it allows- it's- it's a full-day event for, I mean, the person that we're contracting with is an event planner. They sell their product.
I, again, Mr. Enos, if you, it's- it's presented to the Commissioners Court by the Parks Department, and it's up to, you know, it's discretionary with you whether you approve this particular contract or not.
Well, why don't we do this and see if everybody's okay with this? Can you- can you get together with- with, uh, with the parks and everybody and figure out what our out-of-pocket costs would be? You have to factor in our time, well, not our time, but your time. You know, parks, cleanup, security, whatever it is, and come up with a number. And then you present it to them that, you know, we'll approve this subject to you, you know, reimbursing us for the cost that we're incurring to put this together.
I can do that. My concern for that in this particular case is that we don't have a policy in place. And basically, if you have a policy in place to do that, otherwise to charge an application fee, then it puts, it requires any applicant to meet those qualifications that are set out in our policy. And on the other hand, the flip side is if they do meet those requirements, then you have a ministerial duty to award the license. We haven't been doing this, and so to do it on an ad hoc basis, I mean, if they're willing to do it voluntarily, fine. But I'm not totally comfortable with it on a- on that type of a basis.
Well, I've spent a lot of time in the last few, well, last month and a half, looking for money. You know, I mean, we want to balance the budget. We want to do all these things. And, you know, when I saw this, I says, well, here we have an opportunity to supplement what our county Parks Department does, and we're not taking advantage of it. Evidently, there's, you know, we own something that others want to use. And it's, this is a for- this is not like the surfing group, or it's not like a nonprofit group. This is a for-profit venture.
Well, we can determine, I mean, certainly, it's capable of determining the cost of our time and the time that the Parks Department puts in. That's- that's not an issue, we can determine that. It's just the issue of doing it all, I mean, we haven't been doing it forever, and to start doing it without a policy, I'm uncomfortable.
Well, but how many for-profits have we done this for?
I- I don't know, Delvia might have, and I don't know, Javier here. I really don't know. I imagine it's quite a few over the years. I don't- I don't know.
Well, we have three choices, approve, not approve, or charge some kind of a fee. So.
I prefer charging at least for the expense incurred.
You know, I think we don't have a policy.
Until we get a policy in place.
Yeah, so I think that this may set the template for a policy. I don't have any problem charging a fee.
And I'm not talking astronomical, I'm just talking like.
Yeah, I don't think, I mean, it's got to be some reasonable amount.
So you want to approve passage of it subject to them reimbursing the county's cost?
I think- I think that would be fair. And then- and then, then we develop, start working on a policy that we can utilize in the future.
As determined by the county.
Yes, yes, Commissioner.
Okay, so you want to- you want to approve item sixteen and seventeen subject to, uh, Richard and, and I guess Pete and Javier Mendez coming up with a, I guess, a cost reimbursement to the county?
Right.
For the use of this?
Yeah, that's fine.
And we're not going to charge them any override. In the fut- in the future, we can do this, plus some kind of a nominal application fee to use the property. Are we having any security involved?
Yes.
Ours?
Sure.
Yeah, see, so I think you have to factor, you know, just, you know, come up with your best guesstimate, something that's- that's reasonable.
I- I think we can come up with better than a guesstimate. I think we can come up with a pretty close estimate of what the costs are.
All right, well, then, can you do that for us?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Gatsa, to approve item, let me read item seventeen. Consideration authorization to execute a license agreement between Cameron County Parks and Recreation and Doug Bond Camel Corporation of Texas for HEB Crunch Tour Promotion at Beach Access Number Six. Uh, we have a motion, a second, to approve subject to, Richard, oh, subject to you providing a- a cost analysis and reimbursement back to the county. If they say no, we're not going to do that, then I guess the deal's off. Okay? Motion is second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item eighteen, consideration approval of amendments to concession agreements Two Zero Zero Seven C Zero Six One Two Four and Two Zero Zero Seven C Zero Six One Two Five with Beach Service of South Padre Island LLC at Andy Bowie Park and San Piper Pavilion.
You can do nineteen together with us.
Consideration of approval of the concession, item nineteen, consideration and approval of concession agreement Two Zero Zero Seven C Zero Eight One Nine Five with Esther Castaneda doing business as Islah Beachware at Islah Banker Park.
On those, Delvia, these are things that we had already approved, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, it's just a matter of ratifying the amendments.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Come on.
Move by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Gatsa, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Was that Benavides?
Didn't make the motion?
Yeah.
Okay, correction. Commissioner Benavides, second by Commissioner Gatsa. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item twenty-three, consideration authorization to nominate Valley Proud Environmental Council to apply for a Texas General Land Office Coastal Management Program Cycle Thirteen Grant to continue for Captain Crab Clean Beach Media and Education Campaign for the spring and summer of two thousand and nine.
Um, I had this item pulled. I know we have Ms. Maxwell here, and I would like her to please, um, kind of give us a little update because I had the pleasure of being at one of the puppet shows, and it was very, you were there too, very entertaining and very informative.
I gave you each a photograph, copy of our puppet show. We have been extremely successful. We had no idea, um, James Matts and his wife, Georgia Ann, and I were talking the other day. If we had any idea what it would have taken to do this, we may not have- have gone this route. But it's so well worth it. Uh, we are- we are extending out, we are, Cameron County has been extremely receptive. We're in LaFaria, San Benito, Harlingen, Los Fresnos, Brownsville School Districts. We were at the San Benito Boot Camp. Um, we target fourth-grade students, but this has just been phenomenal. We've had all different ages. We have traveled up out of the valley. Um, the Galveston Bay Foundation paid for all of our travel expenses and everything to bring the puppet show up to the Kima Boardwalk. Uh, we're going up, the Texas General Land Office is- is approved for us to go September fifteenth once again to the boardwalk. This, it's, we've had people calling us, asking us how to do this. But the, I guess, the most rewarding thing for me is I'm on my sixth year as Executive Director at Valley Proud, and I was a big part of all the planning and everything. But to see the thank-you letters that children send and teachers send. Um, for Cycle Thirteen, I've already had support letter requests sent out to this very various, the island chamber, the town. Um, but I've had so many letters of support come in that I haven't even asked for. It's just unbelievable. Not to mention also, with Cameron County, we have extended the beach signs, not just for the beach, but we are, this past grant cycle, uh, the beach, the signs have gone to the parks. We've begun the Cameron County Parks signs as far as litter and trash. It's, I get calls all the time. We are starting a new campaign with Captain Crab, and that was in your- your information that we gave you there. So it shows the puppets, kind of a caricature of the puppets. That is a new campaign going out to further enhance and enforce the puppet show. It's, it's, I appreciate your- your past nominations and- and support of this- this program. Little did we know how successful it was going to be. If you have any questions or concerns, there is no cost to the county.
The only, the only thing we'd like to see is the day we saw the puppet show, we didn't see the Cameron County decal on the trailer.
Well, we- we need to do that. Can, yes, absolutely.
Remember, sir, yeah.
I will talk to Mr. Absolutely, whatever. It's just so exciting.
I certainly want to thank you for all your efforts as well as the whole group. I mean, Valley Proud is marvelous.
Thank you.
And I know that a lot of young people that get involved, uh, the adults end up being their mentors. So you're killing two birds with one stone. You're getting the job done, and at the same time, you're influencing the youth.
Yes.
So I want to thank you for that.
Thank you very much.
I'm involved with the boys at Tamayo House, and they love Valley Proud. I mean, they're, they love working with you.
The Boys and Girls Clubs?
Yes.
We've been to the Boys and Girls Clubs. It's just, it's just boomeranged, it's just exciting.
Thank you.
Move to approve, second.
Second.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Move by Commissioner Gatsa, second by Commissioner Wood. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item forty-three, budget amendment, line item transfers and/or salary schedules?
Judge and Commissioners, uh, there was line item transfers, uh, that were included in your packets and, um, um, salary schedules also. Plus, there was additional ones that were placed in front of you before the meeting. Um, if you have any specific questions on any of the items, I can address those. Uh, most of them are within, well, all of them are within budget. Uh, transferring funds between, uh, different line items. Um.
Anybody have any specific questions for Javier? Do I hear a motion to approve? Move by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Gatsa. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries, item forty-four, approval of minutes for July the twenty-fourth, two thousand and seven. Do I hear a motion to approve, or does the court need more time to review the minutes?
Judge, I need more time, my computer's been down.
Do I hear a motion to table? Move by Commissioner Wood, second by Commissioner Gatsa, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item forty-five, approval of county claims. Any questions on the claims? And the additional ones that were passed out? Do I hear a motion for approval of county claims?
Move to approve.
Move by Commissioner Wood, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tamayo. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Please note my abstention on the affidavit regarding Harlingen Water Works.
And I have an abstention on warrant zero zero one eight six seven zero zero.
Item forty-six, consideration authorization to create two deputy sheriffs in one dispatcher position by utilizing the sheriff's drug forfeiture funds. Do I hear a motion for approval?
So move.
Move by Commissioner Wood, second by Commissioner Tamayo, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries?
What questions, Judge?
Yes, sir.
Are these effective immediately or effective?
The beginning of the fiscal year.
Sheriff?
I'm sorry.
My question was whether they would be effective immediately or in the beginning of the fiscal year, Sheriff?
Beginning of fiscal year.
Yeah.
So.
As it is stated on the agenda item.
Right.
Thank you. Item forty-seven, discussion of possible action regarding the fiscal year two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight budget.
Judge and Commissioners, I left a pack in front of you similar to the ones from the previous meetings and the current status of where we're at. I'd also emailed, uh, the court, uh, some information in reference to the- the health insurance of fund and the premiums. Uh, I also included in this packet, uh, the status of that. Um, based on the information that was provided, I'll start with the health insurance since it affects the, uh, previous sheet. Uh, based on the- the status of the claims and expanding on the information that had been provided by Mr. Wethy, uh, including the claims that had been paid for June, July, and August and reimbursements that we had received from our stop-loss. Um, originally, the, on the, on the second page, it has a breakdown of the cost, uh, broken down on a per- per-claim basis, the stop-loss reimbursements. And I also included, based on the- the approval of the contract with Blue Cross and Blue Shield, the rates, um, into this to calculate, of course, what the actual cost for this fiscal year. Uh, and then, and based on the representations, on the proposal of the estimated savings, factoring that into to get an estimate as to what the claims cost would be for next fiscal year. Um, based on that, if you look at the- the last two columns, uh, the estimated claims, based on claims, including the- the additional discounts that we should be receiving, uh, that's three-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars. Um, for two thousand and six and two thousand and seven, we are currently, um, averaging four-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars and twenty-five cents per claim. Uh, reimbursement, of course, that's backing up what we've received, that's crediting us at eighty-four sixty-eight, uh, the net, and then the administration fees to where it's costing us this fiscal year almost four-hundred-and-ninety dollars, uh, per claim. In fact, uh, going into next fiscal year, including the administrative fees and the stop-loss premium and including the, um, the amount estimated for claims for next fiscal year for two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, in the second to the last column, where there is no amount under stop-loss reimbursements, since that's based on the actual reimbursements that you get when you exceed, uh, excuse me, the, initially with a hundred thousand, this next fiscal year will be the two-hundred thousand dollars. The estimated claims, our- our cost per employee would be four-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars and thirty-four cents per employee. Uh, the- the last column is, uh, taking an estimate of what would be half of what we had received this fiscal year. Uh, that would translate into four-hundred-and-twelve dollars, uh, per employee. We are presently funding our health insurance plan at, uh, four-hundred dollars a month per employee.
How long has it been at that rate?
Uh, it's been at that rate for about five years.
Four years.
Four or five years.
Except for a time, a couple of years ago, in which we cut the rate to half that much because we were having some issues with the jail when we lost our federal prisoners. And it was cut to two-hundred.
To two-hundred for the last, I think, three.
For six months.
Six months?
Six months of that. Six months of the fiscal year.
So in conversations with the consultant last week, his recommendation was to look at the four hundred and fifty dollars per month, which is the fifty-four hundred dollar per employee rate. I have included on that sheet the current rate, and of course, different levels, which would be the five thousand dollars, the fifty-one hundred dollars, and the fifty-four hundred dollars, and what that additional cost would mean to the general fund, since that's the largest one that it affects. At the fifty-four hundred dollars, that's an additional six hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars that the general fund would have to come up with to transfer to the health insurance fund. So going back to the first page, as the current revenues that I've received from the auditor's office, and this still reflects a penny decrease from the current rate, the revenues that are there, the current expenditures, which does include the thousand dollar across-the-board increase, does include the overtime for the jailers, it also includes the costs associated with picking up the part-time employees to eight dollars an hour, excuse me, all of those expenditures, stopping at that point, there's three hundred and thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and one dollars available.
Are you including the absorption by Valley Baptist of the?
Yes.
The, okay.
Yes, those savings are included.
All right.
Listed below that, we had discussed last week the sale of the Travis Street property in San Manito, which is a hundred thousand dollars. And in discussions today, and I guess with the actions that the court took last week, in reference to the Health Services District, we will be reimbursed our five hundred and forty-five thousand dollars from the Health Services District. And then, for upcoming fiscal years, the tobacco proceeds, or tobacco settlement proceeds that were previously obligated to the Health Services District now stay with the county. So the five hundred and forty-five thousand dollars are listed there, which leaves a total available of nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and one. Still listed are the items from the previous meetings, but I have included at this point, and of course, this is up to the court, the six hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, which is in relation to the converting or increasing the premium from four, forty-eight hundred to fifty-four hundred dollars per employee. Below that are the items that were discussed in the past, which were still picking up the thousand dollar increase for the WIC program, and of course, the maintenance projects, the positions with the constables, JPs, and juvenile probation. The bottom, and at that point, we're still a hundred, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars short at that point. Road and bridge is at the same. Tax rate, the expenditures, of course, the thousand dollar increase from employees is the same, and it leaves three hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars, which would go to road materials, I'm assuming. That's the point where we're at right now. I would need, I guess, in discussions, I guess, direction from the court towards the health.
I think we need to have the discussion, Javier, that we've had in regards to the health insurance premium. One of the things that we found out that has been occurring is our health insurance is being funded by payroll for employees that are on the payroll of the county on a weekly basis.
On a bi-weekly basis.
Start again, what now? The health insurance plan is funded. We fund it here as an example, okay? Javier takes the six hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, right? That's the increased cost based on?
All slots.
All the slots.
In the general fund.
That exist in the fund, okay? We fund the health plan based on all the slots that the county has. What happens is, according to Mr. Villarreal, Manuel Villarreal, we average probably fifty to sixty vacancies on a monthly basis in the county. As a result, those four hundred dollars a month for those vacant slots are not put into the health fund. So we've discussed with Legal this afternoon, and we've discussed with Pete and Mr. Villarreal, both Mr. Villarreals, you know, that, and I asked Richard to, next week, propose to give County Commissioners Court an order saying that we fund our health insurance by the number of slots that we theoretically have as a county. If we have fifty people not employed because those slots are empty, we should still continue to fund our health insurance fund for all the slots. That's our plan, okay? And if we were to do that, I think that we found that we would not have to increase our rates to five thousand, four hundred a year. That rate could be increased to five thousand, right?
I lost you.
So you're saying, let me see if I'm understanding this. Okay, let me see if this is, the empty slots, let's say we have a vacancy, and you're saying we go ahead and include those, but the money stays where?
In the health insurance fund.
In the health insurance, okay.
The reason they want to increase the rate is because our?
Of the numbers?
Health insurance fund balance is going lower than we'd like it to be.
Because we're not covering the vacancies?
Well, because? Yeah, there's a couple of things that are going on. Number one, if you look at the third page, and you look at the paid claims, you can see from, for the past three years, that they've gone up. So there is more, I guess, usage, either the number of claims, or just the, what's being paid, or the severity of the illnesses that are being paid.
Or mutual is paying all the claims that come in.
Correct.
Okay, right now.
So that's one factor, and our level of funding has remained the same for the past three or four years. So you have, the claims are now starting to exceed what's going into the fund, to where the fund balance is, you're hitting your fund balance, in other words. So in order to rectify that, you have to, based on the anticipated claims, increase the premium, the monthly premium, in order to get to the level to where it?
Okay.
It depends what you want to do. If you want to get to the point where it's equal, or you want to get to the point where you're starting to increase the fund balance back within the health insurance fund.
I think that it's easy to, if you go to page two, Commissioner Tamayo.
I've got, I've got page.
This one.
Yeah, I've got that.
You know, the average number of employees at the bottom there, for this coming year is fifteen seventy-seven, okay?
But that's all employees?
That's all employees.
Slots.
That's every slot.
Slots.
Every slot in the county being filled.
If every slot was, okay, no vacancies, that's what you're saying.
Right. What happens is, if only fifteen hundred of those slots are filled this pay period, seventy-seven slots at two hundred dollars each are not paid into the health fund, because there's no one there to get a payroll check. Right, Rob? Okay? And what I'm saying is, we, if we're going to base our plan on fifteen hundred and seventy-seven slots, we need to put into our health fund that number times forty-eight hundred dollars, or whatever amount it is.
Every pay period.
Right. I mean, that's what it's based on. If it's a grant fund, I mean, we still have to have the slot open to hire someone for it. And we should not penalize the health fund.
Because we haven't filled the vacancies.
Because we haven't filled the vacancies. And if we were to do that, that would mean that we would have an extra three hundred thousand dollars or so.
In the health fund.
Just by paying the bill that we should be paying in the health fund, and money that we don't have to come up with in his budget up here in the top, and on the first page. We were looking for money. Another area that we found is that the county pays today four thousand, eight hundred dollars per employee to have them insured, right?
Correct.
That's what it costs us today. If you are a retired employee in Cameron County, of Cameron County, you pay a hundred and seventy-five dollars a month to get full coverage, right, Mr. Villarreal? Manuel? A retired employee of Cameron County today pays a hundred and seventy-five dollars a month to be insured on our plan.
That's correct.
Okay, you multiply one seventy-five times twelve, and you got the big catch.
Twenty-one hundred.
Twenty-one hundred dollars. The county is subsidizing each retired employee.
How many retired employees are there?
Eighteen.
How many?
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
The county is subsidizing each retired employee seventeen hundred dollars a year to keep him insured. And according to Mr. V, some of those employees are the high-cost employees. They cost the plan more money, because they're retired, they need more medical care. So I thought it was important that Commissioners Court know the cost of keeping those individuals at that rate is to the county.
Thirty thousand dollars.
That's another thirty thousand, and we found some more money. There was another group, the other group was?
Well, that's, we found it, I mean, we're?
No, we subsidized it.
Well, I understand that, but?
But how do we?
Yeah, but the way you find it is if you're willing to bump up, you know, bring them up and quit subsidizing.
Exactly. The question is, should we continue subsidizing twenty-one hundred dollars of coverage a year? Or seventeen hundred dollars a year for these, for our retired employees?
Oh, in other words?
Is it fair to the health insurance pool? That's the question.
So you'd lower what?
Well, what you do, you would bump up that one seventy-five by X amount of dollars. Well, that's assuming that you want to charge retired employees the same amount, you know? I mean, they're, I mean, they, well, my position would be, I'd have to look at the numbers, but man, you got people that have given twenty, thirty years to the county, and, you know, they're barely making ends meet as it is, and then you're going to, and I know we are subsidizing, but you know what? We're subsidizing our current employees as well, though, too, though. I mean, I wouldn't, I would, I as one, would really have to look at it to go, and we're talking about thirty thousand, six hundred dollars, maybe we could bump it up, instead of going all the way up, maybe doing it fifty dollars, or something.
I just thought it was important for all of us to know.
No, it is, I mean, to know. I thought, quite frankly, I thought we had more retirees, I thought the number was a lot higher.
I did too. I mean, Manuel, is that number correct?
That seems a little low, quite frankly.
That's awfully low.
They go now into many.
We have a lot of retirees that are over sixty-five, that have Medicare, so we don't carry those.
Oh, I see.
And so, so we only have those that are, before they get sixty-five.
In between.
Yes. And, you know, we also do the same thing with Cobra. We charge two hundred and forty, two hundred and sixty dollars for Cobra. And so, we pay four hundred dollars for the employee, and we don't have enough money, but then all the other programs, we undercharge. And sometimes, like, for example, we have a lot of single parents, and they have children, and we pay, they pay seventy-five for one child, a hundred for two, two hundred for the whole family. And, but, you know, that's never been touched, because of that, because we have a lot of single parents, and they don't qualify for Medicaid, and they need health benefits. So we have that, but?
And Cobras, how many were Cobra?
Huh?
Seventeen, seventeen were Cobra? Cobra?
Ah, it's, it's not a whole, whole bunch. There's not too many Cobra.
That's another thing that I thought was high.
Most of the time, that is done for people that have dependent children, that are going to college, and work, and go to college, and they don't have any health benefits, so they qualify for Cobra, and that keeps them having a health benefit, and they really don't work full-time to be, have a health benefit from their employer. So that's, that's an issue that happens a lot in Cobra. Or if some people get divorced, and then the spouse qualifies for Cobra. And so, that's where the Cobra is. But our dependents are also?
They're paying, for retirees, we're paying one seventy-five?
They pay one seventy-five.
That's what they pay.
A month.
And it's a, so that means if we decide to go all the way up, that means that they would get zapped an additional two seventy-five per month.
Two twenty-five. As it currently stands.
Yeah, but that's?
No, but I'm assuming we go to the four fifty. Yeah.
It would be two twenty-five.
Right, it's two seventy-five. That's a lot of money for retirees.
That's too much money for retirees. And that's why it's never been really touched. But that one seventy-five goes to, back to nineteen ninety-four, when the county contributed a hundred and seventy-five per employee.
It would be some, that contribution in ninety-four.
And so, since then, medical costs have gone up at eighteen, twelve to eighteen percent every year.
Well, let me ask you, if you go back to the nineteen ninety-four number where this base was calculated, what would the increase be using today's dollars? That's really what you have to look at, because that ought to be what she, you know, what should be going up.
Yeah, I think, I think the county was contributing at that time, per employee, around two thousand dollars.
How much?
Around two thousand dollars per employee, so it was budgeted, I think.
Which would be like about a hundred and seventy-five dollars.
It was the same amount that the retirees pay is what they were putting in for your employee.
I know that, but what was our cost of insurance back then?
One seventy-five.
One seventy-five per employee.
Oh, so it's, so then, back in ninety-four, they were getting charged exactly what we were paying?
At that, no, but let me tell you, at that time, my understanding was that our reserves in the health benefit plan was at eleven million dollars. And they did that, and they did a vision program and a dental program, and little by little, it started eating up the reserves, you know, because we were spending more than we were taking in. And when I came in ninety-seven, Mark and I sat down, he was working on the budget, and I said, Mark, you know, we're underfunding the health plan. We're going to run out of money, because, I mean, we're spending more than?
So we've been consistently doing that.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, and, you know, where I had come from in other industries, they were already at three hundred and three hundred and fifty dollars, and we were sitting at a hundred and seventy-five. Then they went up to two hundred and twenty-five, I think, and little by little, now it went up to four hundred in two thousand and three. And that's when we've come up with this, but we've stayed consistently for that, like four years, at four hundred. And we're still at that, we can still accrue three million dollars of reserves, which we used one million. We didn't really take it out, we just paid less into the thing, and we paid claims out of the reserves, because we can't use reserves for anything else other than to pay claims. So we just paid less for each employee, and covered the claims with reserves. But it's been, we've had some, hit hard. One year we had ten, catastrophic, and it cost us a million dollars. Another, last year we had eight, that cost us eight hundred thousand dollars. And these are over and above the regular claims. Even though we have stop-loss, and stop-loss picks up a lot after that, but we still, and what happens too is that when, before stop-loss pays us back, we have to pay the claims.
Upfront.
Yeah, and so then they reimburse us.
You know, I don't have a problem with, I mean, we have to make some adjustments. We haven't made an adjustment in thirteen years. We have to make some adjustment. I just don't, I mean, I just can't see it to, you know, to double it, from what they're paying or more than that.
I'm not saying double it, I'm just saying.
You just want to know what the number is.
You're just getting information.
I just want to make sure you guys?
Well, you know what? Why don't you, I mean, come back and give us a recommendation? Maybe we need to bump it up fifty dollars a month, or twenty-five dollars a month, or something. Come up with something that's reasonable, and then maybe let the retirees know that we're going to be looking at this every year, so it goes up, so we don't hit them all at once, you know, eventually catch them up to that. But I would probably say, no more than fifty dollars a month, but no less than twenty-five.
Maybe you can give us, like, maybe two options?
And see what it would be.
Well, how does the court feel on the, on the other issue of funding the health plan by the number of slots that it's based on?
Well, I think that's fine, but the thing is that you have to, when we set up these slots, you're assuming they're going to be filled within a reasonable period of time. They're not meant to be empty, or else we just eliminate them.
Well, but they're, on the average, you said we had seventy, right?
Well, well, for example, the jail, the jail has tremendous turnover, so they normally maintain twenty, twenty-five vacant slots. They fill one up, and two quit, or back, or they don't pass the test, so there's always that going on. So they, they always have lapsed salaries to pay overtime, because not all the slots are full. And so therefore, those slots are not contributing to the, to the health.
Well, if that were the case, then why, why is our fund balance not where it ought to be? I mean, if, well, in the, in the health insurance plan.
Because we're not, we're not paying all those slots right now. The only slots that are contributing to the health fund are those that are?
Okay, so, okay, so what you're saying is that the fifteen hundred and seventy-seven, that's the number that they're using to budget, and you're saying, Manuel, or somebody's saying that, on the average, we've got seventy slots per month at any given time that are vacant?
Well, it varies. Sometimes it's fifty, sometimes, because we'll have fifteen, thirty-five total employees, or we'll have less than that. I think we have more slots actually than fifteen, seven, I think it's closer to sixteen hundred slots that we totally have, for all the?
Well, what would happen if we decided to do, you know, the number of slots less sixty? Sixty, in other words, sixty that we don't have to, you know, and then adopt, I mean, look at the number of that, sixty times four fifty times twelve, whatever the number is, and that reduce that from the six hundred and forty-seven thousand?
Or, or look at the historical data that you have, and, and what was the lowest number of vacancies that were not filled, maybe you could go by that.
You could look at that.
Do you see what I'm saying?
But, but the easy-
I understand it, you know, it'd just be very-
The, the easy thing to do is just, if, if we have, if, if this Commissioner's Court has approved fifteen hundred and seventy-seven slots for the fiscal year, our health plan is based-
On fifteen hundred and seventy-seven slots.
Right.
And maybe it'll be based on fifteen hundred and ten or something.
No, 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 fund the plan at fifteen seventy-seven.
A lower rate.
You know, at the lower rate.
Which is kind of six of one, half dozen another.
It's the same thing.
It, it comes out today.
If we do it, if, if we do it, yeah, if we do it at sixty dollars, I mean, sixty slots, that's three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars that we don't have to recognize.
Well, then that's what we're looking for.
Yeah, that we can do.
But, what, what, what is the biggest dilemma is, for example, right now, our fund balance in the health plan is zero. And they're running claims, and, 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 and Mutual of Omaha is trying to clean up all their claims, so they don't want to do three months of runoff, they want to do it in less. So they're cleaning everything out, and Rob can verify that we're out of money in the health plan, and we just got some money from stop-loss, and then whatever's coming in, but we still don't, don't pay on all the slots, we only pay on those that are filled.
But Manuel, I mean, this, I mean, this train's been coming for a while, I mean, this is not just happening, this has been coming for a couple of years at least.
We've been asking for actuarial studies now for at least three or four years. But, but if we can, you know, it's simple, if, if the county has that number of slots, all we have to do is tell the auditor, you charge the account for every slot, whether it's filled or not. Don't wait to do a payroll check on everybody to charge it off, just charge it off automatically, whether it's a grant-
Well, then we're back to the six hundred and forty-seven thousand.
No, we're not, no, we're not. We're not, because you don't have to raise it to that number to raise the same account amount of money. See, the only reason that you have that number there is because it's based on the number of people employed, not the slots.
No, it's just based on the slots.
No, it's not based on the slots.
We need to come with a, with a more realistic figure, uh, because if we have, if we consistently have those many vacancies, maybe there's a problem there, and, and Judge, you mentioned it a while ago, if, if certain slots are not filled within six months-
Three months?
Well, I mean, I'll be, give them the benefit of the doubt, then evidently we don't need that slot, unless I can understand with a jail situation.
You need the money.
Yeah, Judge, Judge-
Where's the money? Okay.
Judge and Commissioner, on this issue, uh, it really, you can legally do what Commissioner Garza's suggesting, and quite, you already budget, if there are fifteen hundred and seventy-seven slots, you budget each department a line item for four hundred dollars per slot in that budget.
Yeah, it's already budgeted, okay.
So, what's happening is, is if you don't, if there's a vacancy, and that four hundred dollars isn't transferred to the health plan to pay, then it sits in the slot, in, in the line item. Now, if, if, so what, what he's suggesting is that you pay whatever, whatever number of slots you have, you pay that in, now, if the slot, if, it, what, what you're saying, Commissioner, if, on a three-month or six-month basis, you decide to reduce, you know, a slot, well, that would just be one less slot that would be paying in, but it's not there. I mean, is, is, the, the whole idea is, as many slots as you have, is you're paying in whatever amount, four hundred or four hundred plus, because it's already budgeted. And if you, and we used to do that, and for some reason we quit, and I don't know why, why it is, but I would suggest that you do it by order or motion, make it policy, if you're gonna do that, because it could affect the grants, employees. Grants have some specific language that any payment for employee or employee benefit, uh, benefits has to be according to policy, and there might be specific grants that you can't do that on, but, but at least if you have a-
But for the most part, you can.
Yes.
And, and if we fund the slots that we have at four hundred and twenty-five dollars instead of four fifty, that gives us an extra three hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars, okay?
Well, I can't put three twenty-four, but okay.
Well, this is how you have figures.
Did something wrong.
Mine's probably right.
But that's fine, that's, that's okay.
Javier?
We're just looking for money, and funding also the health plan properly.
Well, we're looking at the number of employees, we're looking at fifteen seventy-seven the current year, and fifteen seventy-seven next year, is that fifteen seventy-seven taking into consideration what might be proposed on the first page of additional new employees?
Well, the, the fifteen seventy-seven, uh, that's listed there, um, and, and is the average, uh, number of employees that were participating in the plan, uh, based on Mutual of Omaha's numbers, so that's, that's more on, on the, the expenditure side, uh, as to, to break down the actual cost per person using the actual plan. Uh, right now, the way I have, uh, the revenues set up for, uh, the, the health fund, um, is looking at, to try to get an accurate picture, is what's being transferred to the health insurance fund now on a per payroll basis, plus what's being, uh, deposited for, uh, both the retirees, and what's being transferred, or deposited for the Cobra, and for what's also included for the dependents. Because the number of employees here, uh, factors what we contribute for the employee, but doesn't have what the employee is paying for their families, or the dependents that they have. So what, what I have is what we've been, as far as the projected revenues, is what's been historically transferred for this fiscal year to the health insurance fund, inclusive of all those numbers, and then on the expenditure side, based on the historical data that we have, excuse me, from, uh, from Mutual of Omaha for this fiscal year, um, and then backing out the anticipated savings from Blue Cross and Blue Shield, uh, plus the, the, the cost for the stop-loss premium and the administrative fees, uh, included in that also. So, the revenues within the budget right now are not based on, say, uh, X number of employees times forty-eight hundred dollars, uh, it's based on what's actually being transferred into the fund right now, because that's all that's going in there. So if I do it on the other way, it may look like we have, uh, or it's balanced, or it's not as bad as, as it is, it's based on, on the real numbers, as to what's actually going in there right now, what has been going in there this year.
So-
So the number of employees would be this number here, right?
The fifteen-
Correct, that's, that's, that's the, right, that's the average of, of the employees that were participating in the plan for this fiscal year, yeah.
In the plan.
So, based on, on, on the, the scenario that I'd explained, uh, on the revenues that I have right now, and the, the total expenditures, uh, and this is just, uh, you know, not doing anything additional in that, is, it's a shortfall of four hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars, uh, in the health plan.
So, would we, would we be in agreement to funding the plan in that way at least, on the slots that we have?
I don't have any problem with that.
And then if a slot is eliminated, the number changes, the number changes, okay.
And that way, that would give you those three twenty-three.
That extra money.
Correct.
Okay, and then look at the other item that the judge asked for on retirees, you want to have him to look at that?
Yeah.
Bring that back to us.
And Cobra?
I think the same thing.
Same thing?
Yeah, both of them.
Bring that back to us next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
Yeah, I mean, get everything to the court as soon as you get it done, but we'll discuss it next Tuesday.
Okay.
Anything else, Javier?
Um, well, what I also have on the last page, and it, I guess, in, in preparation for the public hearing, if there's anyone here, um, the last page, Commissioner Benavides had asked, uh, for some information as to what, uh, the real dollar, uh, effect is on, on the tax rate, and this is just based on the average home value that we received from the appraisal district. Um, uh, in two thousand and six, the average home value was seventy-seven thousand, four seventy-three, for this coming year is eighty-one thousand, five fifty, and here are the, the, below that are the tax rates, and, and what that means as far as tax payments. This year, their payments, uh, for this, uh, home, uh, was two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, excuse me, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents, uh, adopting the same rate, and based on the new valuation, uh, the tax payment would be two eighty-three ninety-five, which would be an increase of fourteen dollars and, and twenty cents. Uh, by decreasing the tax rate by one cent, uh, the increase in tax payment would be the six dollars and four cents, uh, the, uh, decreasing it by half a penny would be ten dollars and twelve cents. If the court had adopted the effective rate, their tax payment would actually have gone down, uh, three dollars and sixty-eight cents, and that was for information that Commissioner Benavides had at that point. Uh, other than that, uh, that's where we're at right now, um, the actual adoption of the budget is scheduled to take place, uh, September the eleventh, and the adoption of the tax rate also, there'll be a notice that runs in the paper on Sunday notifying the public of the vote on the tax rate, um-
Okay, so right now, based on what you provided, we're a hundred and seventy thousand in the hole, assuming-
It went to the fifty-four hundred dollar rate.
Correct, okay, and we're gonna try to whittle that down.
Right.
Okay.
Do.
All right.
Okay.
Okay. Do I hear mo, any further discussion? Do I hear a motion to acknowledge, um, Mr. Villarreal's, uh, presentation regarding the fiscal year budget? Moved by Commissioner Tamayo.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wood, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries, item forty-eight, consideration authorization to hold a public hearing regarding the fiscal year two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight budget. Do I hear a motion to open the meeting for a public hearing? Moved by Commissioner Gatsa.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tamayo, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are in a public hearing.
Judge and Commissioners, um, when we came to our, uh, budget hearings, I kinda got the feeling that, uh, you approved that, uh, one and a half slots, uh, for the county clerk's office that we can open in San Benito, and the half slot for our tax office, and I haven't heard anything, uh, so, today, you know, so, I wanted to make sure that that was included in the, uh, two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight budget, because if we don't, we won't be able to open up in San Benito. You know, we got, uh, the office, we've got the equipment, and all we need is that one and a half slot.
I will tell you that those are not here, is that correct?
Uh, that's, I didn't hear anything when Mr. Villarreal was-
Yeah, and, and that, I don't believe that, that, I, I as one don't believe they're off the table completely, but right now, we're, we're, we're without those, we're one seventy in the hole, so we're hoping that what he, what he works on regarding this health, you know, we might be able to plug this hole and have enough available to, to do those spots. Okay, so that, that's, that's what I think, that's, that's what my goal is at this point, try to plug this hole, and then hopefully have a little bit left over to be able to, to, uh, to meet your needs as well.
Well, one of the things I want to remind this court is, is that out of our records of management-
Two hundred thousand.
Budget, uh, we're giving you over two hundred thousand dollars plus fringe, you know, and every year we're told, we gotta take care of you, thank you for helping us, uh, we're gonna help you this year, and, and every year, we, you fund the other departments and, and leave us out, and it's a little bit unfair, you know, and, uh, I want you to, to make sure that, that we can discuss it, and budget those out, because if we don't, uh, we're gonna have equipment, but the office won't be able to open it.
If you go back to the original though, Mr. Villarreal, we, we cut out juvenile probation, we cut out taking court administrators to, I mean, we cut out a lot of things, okay, so, and I think those are, those are gonna have a real difficult time coming back. Your spots, I think, if, if what I hear, uh, the court talking about, along with what Mr. Villarreal's gonna come up with, I think we might be able to come up with, with seventy-five thousand more and plug this hole, but, but just see how the numbers all wash out, and, and we'll do our best to do that.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you.
Any, any other comments from the public regarding the budget? Do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Gatsa, second by Commissioner Tamayo, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries, item forty-nine, consideration authorization to hold a public hearing regarding the proposed tax rate for fiscal year two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, at or below point three four eight one nine one for every one hundred dollar valuation. Do I hear a motion to, to, well, do you wanna make a present, because we already did this, so there's nothing, we're still on the same page, so we're not gonna adopt a bud, uh, a tax rate higher than the current rate, right?
Than the current rate. Correct.
Okay.
This is the second hearing.
Yeah, let me hear a motion by, uh, Commissioner Gatsa.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tamayo to hold a public hearing regarding the proposed tax rate for two fiscal year two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight.
Uh, Judge and Commissioners, this is the second public hearing, uh, held by Commissioner's Court as required by statute, uh, as I mentioned earlier, the, uh, vote on the tax rate, uh, is scheduled for September the eleventh.
And the tax rate will not be approved above zero point three four eight one nine one for one hundred values.
That's what our current tax rate is now, right?
Right.
Okay, any member of the audience like to make a public comment regarding the tax rate? Do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Gatsa, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries, item fifty-one, consideration authorization to hold a public hearing for the purpose of closing and abandoning of an unnamed road located in the Rutherford Harding subdivision, recorded, recorded in volume nine, page sixteen of the map records, and said road is located in precinct three.
Judge and Commissioners, Richard Burris has asked for additional information from Richard Walker on this, and he would request that you table this item and item fifty-two, please.
Okay, let me read item fifty-two, consideration authorization to adopt an order authorizing the closing and abandonment of a certain unnamed road located in the Rutherford Harding subdivision, recorded in volume nine, page sixteen of the map rep, map records, and said road is located in precinct three, do I hear a motion to table both items?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Gatsa, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries, item fifty-three, consideration authorization to hold a public hearing for the purpose of changing the road name of E and M Cantu Road to Share Twenty-Eight Road located in Harris Gentry subdivision, recorded in volume eight, page fourteen of the map records, and said road is located in precinct three, uh, do I hear a motion to, uh, hold a public hearing?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Gatsa, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries, we are in a public hearing.
Judge and Commissioners, uh, we followed the county policy, uh, all the backup information is in your packet.
Any member of the public like to address this item? Do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Gatsa, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries, item fifty-four, consideration authorization to adopt an order authorizing the change of name of E and M Cantu Road to Share Twenty-Eight Road, the road is located in Harris Gentry subdivision, recorded in volume eight, page fourteen of the map records, and said road is located in precinct three, do I hear a motion to adopt an order? Moved by Commissioner Gatsa.
Second.
Do I have a second by Commissioner Tamayo, any further discussion?
Uh, now, the, uh, it had been my understanding that even the Cantu family had asked that it move, it be, uh, am I correct?
I'm sorry.
Besides the fact that you, we have the petition there, even the Cantu family-
There's a letter from the family, part of the-
I wanted that for the record.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries, item fifty-five, consideration authorization to hold a public hearing regarding the revision of order adopting rules of Cameron County, Texas for onsite sewage facilities preamble? Do I hear a motion to hold public hearing? Moved by Commissioner Gatsa, second by Commissioner Tamayo, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries, we are in a public hearing, Joe?
Yes, Judge, Commissioner, uh, this is the second, uh, time that we advertise this.
Does any, does any member of the public wish to address this agenda item? Do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Gatsa, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries, item fifty-six, consideration approval of order adopting rules of Cameron County, Texas for onsite sewage facilities preamble? Do I hear a motion to adopt the rules?
I, I just have one question on this, you know, if I may, you know, since we have the expertise in-house to be able to do this work, and we chose not to do it, right?
Yes.
You know, well, is there any merit to possibly, what, what will be occurring now, and what has been occurring is, they have to hire a, an engineer, or a certified individual to do the test for them, right?
Yes, yes, sir.
We have the people certified, i, are there any counties that charge a fee to do that, or is it?
Commissioner, on that issue, on, on the, for the soil test, uh, starting, beginning the year, of this year-
the year, of this year, 2007, uh, we get audited by the TCQ every year and, and TCQ said that we cannot, no longer run the soil test because it would be a company of interest.
Okay.
Oh, that's the reason for it.
Yes.
Okay. Nope. That's all I have.
Do I hear a motion?
Motion for approval.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, seconded by Commissioner Gatsa. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item fifty-seven, consideration action for the appointment of Pedro E. Flores for reserve deputy constable of precinct seven in compliance with the finding that is necessary to appoint the deputy in order to properly handle the business of the constable's office that originates in the constable's precinct. Is, is everything cool?
Everything is checked out.
Do I hear?
He was supposed to have been here, but I...
He was here.
He is.
He, 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 the reserve deputy's here.
Anybody have any questions of the deputy constable? Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Gatsa, seconded by Commissioner Tamayo. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item sixty, consideration and acknowledgement of July 2007 county treasurer's report to Commissioners' Court on accounts held by the county treasurer's office.
The report is there, it's like, uh, I really felt this should have been a consent item. Um, just black and white, the numbers are there. Reporting for July.
Okay, I've got, I've got just a couple of questions, just for clarification. The, um, are we still with First National Bank on all these accounts?
Yes, that's, that's what that report states, yes.
Okay, so then, all our now accounts, we haven't switched over to the new bank?
There's a report for July.
Correct. When did we switch over? Or have we switched over, is my question?
We haven't switched over.
We're still with First National even though we approved a contract a couple of months ago with Texas State Bank?
Everything is being transferred, there was some, uh, I think, uh, your legal knows that there was some, uh, concerns on some of the contracts, those were straightened out. Their attorneys are in Houston, you know? The, the report though, but let me, let me just say something. This is a report about the treasurer's report, not about the bank. I'm not sure you can discuss that as an agenda item, I don't know.
It is a peer.
Yeah, I'm just going by the title, because I was under the assumption that we'd already transferred our accounts to the new bank, because wasn't the contract effective June first or July first?
I think that's a different, would be a different agenda item, I don't know.
The, uh, bank, we did the contracts after the depository bank, there are a bunch of different contracts, um, about transferring wire transfers, and then there's ones that do online banking, and there's three or four. Those are the ones that we had, um, issues with, and I went back and forth with the, with their attorneys, and we brought them back, and they were approved maybe about two weeks ago. So, I think now everybody, all the accounts should be starting to get transferred over to First National, I mean, to Texas State.
To Texas, okay. So, as of this report, we're still over there?
I, I don't, um, are you talking about the accounts on July? I would think some of them still are, yes.
Okay. Do we have any accounts at Texas State Bank?
We are starting to have accounts at Texas State Banks. We have some.
But as of July first, do we have any accounts that have gone over to Texas State Bank?
Um, I thought we were gonna discuss this report, if, if, that's, that's a different issue and it's even a different agenda item. Does she wanna call it also?
No, no, my question is, because the report that we have, and all I'm asking is that do we have any bank accounts July first at Texas State Bank?
Yes, no, no.
We do not? Okay, that was my question. The other, um, the column on the, on the far right, because you have your book, your book, your book, and then you have these numbers on the side?
That's a reconciled, uh, amount. There was some, it shows some, uh, either debit or, or, if you look at number one, uh, 100 general fund on page one...
Uh huh.
Uh, it, it shows two debits to that account, and so the, the, the new amount is, is there on the side.
Okay, so the correct balance, July 31st book should be 1,579?
Right.
Okay.
Well, it is, and that's what it states.
All right. If we go over to the, um, to the CDs, I guess you've answered the question of where the bank is. When you do the, uh, when you go to the last page of the CDs, where it says total interest paid of 307,000, does that go to interest that we've earned way back from 2005?
There was, for the CDs, there was no interest paid in, in July. They, they mature...
Right.
On September 17th.
No, but I'm talking on the first page?
But the report, the report is about July. I think we went through that, it's, we're not gonna give an amount for other months, this is only for July.
Okay, so you're, okay, just so I understand how this reads. On the, on the heading up here, it says September 26th, oh five through current, on, right over here?
Right.
Right?
It's basically, this is giving you a history of some of the CD accounts. There was no interest, again, I state, there's no interest earned in July, because they don't come mature until September. That's the date, those are the dates that it's paid.
All right, but, so then, but the, the interest that we have here checked is really not really for July, it's just from September of 'oh five through, I guess, current, I guess.
It just shows that we're holding those CDs.
But what significance is the total interest paid? I guess the 307,903.81?
I, I don't know where that figure is. Oh, okay, yes, yes, okay. Well, that, that's what was paid in the past.
From September of 'oh five to now? I would assume.
Well, yeah. That's what it says.
Right?
That, that's from September 26th, oh five through the current.
Current, right.
And the total is 307,903.81.
For the two years, okay.
Right.
All right.
For two years, not for the month of July.
Yeah.
Right?
Right?
Yeah, that's what it says here.
Right. Do I hear motion to acknowledge the treasurer's...
Let me just state something, uh, before that. Now, now, this requires on, on your part then to, uh, I think I discussed that with Mr. Burris, I don't know if he's here. Uh, he came to my office to discuss this, and, uh, these reports hadn't been done for maybe thirty years, okay, but, but they are required. And they require on your part to, uh, just for your information, to submit an affidavit, and, and I do have a, a sample of one that, that, uh, here, based on, on something that the, uh, that the state, uh, uh, well, the, uh, the tax, Tax Association of Counties Act, the affidavit...
Yeah, before you go, Larry.
Well, let me, let me just...
You wanna finish that?
Let me finish.
Okay.
The affidavit, this is a sample, this is what I, what we put together, uh, this, this is an affidavit and it's, and, and then it would have your signature. And then this affidavit, uh, by your, it needs to be published in a, in a paper, in a newspaper. And that, I'm basing it on, on something that, that we've been given before.
I think Commissioner Gatsa had a question.
I just, you know, and it's on the CD part, you know? That, the very last page, David, on the 307,903.81, that total interest paid, and I just wanna make sure that I'm clear, is from September 26th of 2005 to the current?
It's from the, right, it's from what's listed there.
Yeah.
Septem, I'm, that, that, it seems like not enough.
Well, you can, you can re-add it if you want. Some CDs were cashed in, so that meant...
In, in the future, are we gonna get like the monthly amounts of the CDs or the...
The, this amount was, is, it just shows that we're holding the CD, okay? The last, which are the last one, two, three, four, the last four CDs. They have not, uh, been paid because they don't mature till September. So, in the September report, you'll see the interest paid for those CDs. I mean, they're earning interest, but it's not paid until September, September 17th.
I guess the question would be, is it a requirement that you go back two fiscal years to show that? Is that part of the requirements? Because I don't know. I don't know.
I don't think it makes much of a difference. I mean, I'm showing you the CDs, you can, you can eliminate everything else and just...
Yeah, and I think, I think...
There was no interest paid in July.
Yeah, I know.
That's basically what it tells you here.
Right, yeah, I know, but I think maybe, unless, unless there's a requirement that, that we need to go back and look at these for two years, maybe just for the sake of simplicity, you may wanna just list the, the CDs that you're holding, plus zero interest.
Judge, judge, let me just say something real quick on that, okay?
Okay.
This is a report, this is a report that I make.
Which one?
And I do it, this, this report that you have, and you have the eight pages.
Right.
Okay? Now, if I include it or, or if I don't include it, that's my option, okay? It just shows you what, the history of that. Now, in this, in this affidavit sample, it does not include anything that has not been paid, okay? This is what you all signed.
Right, so the affidavit doesn't include all the historical stuff?
Right.
Okay, all right.
Well, the affidavit is not in my packet.
We don't have, you're the only one that has that, right?
No, he's gonna provide...
Yeah, this is a sample because it has to be, we still have to check the numbers and all that, and...
And I think...
And I wasn't, and we, it was never clear, uh, with, with, uh, Mr. Burris, if he was gonna do the affidavit or if he wanted me to help, because I'm not required to do it. I'm just, I'm just trying to help.
I don't know, whatever the rule is, it is.
Wasn't there an email where y'all were already communicating on it?
And, yes.
I remember seeing one.
Okay, well, you, you know, you need to talk to him, he's not here, I don't know.
I do know, Commissioners and Judge, that it is an affidavit that each one of you will have to sign, and then it does get published. I don't know if Richard has done an affidavit yet or prepared one.
Yeah, but where did it come from?
Um, by statute. When Richard was looking...
But the, the figures on the affidavit come from where?
From the treasurer.
From the treasurer.
Okay.
And what he reports each day in, in...
Okay.
In some, in some instances, uh, y'all, in some affidavits, they take the whole report and they attach another page or at the end of the report, and they attach places for you to sign and for it to be notarized. So, it would have been an eight-page affidavit, and it has to be published in the paper in the same month, I think we agreed, Mr. Burris and I agreed. And it's similar to the auditor's publishing in the paper, okay, his report. Uh, I don't know what paper he publishes that in, okay, but I broke it down and, and did a, something a little bit simpler, and it's only four pages. Y'all can decide what you wanna do. And that was never clear, he never, he never clarified that. And he has an email that I sent today, uh, you know, I was waiting for more clarification.
Who verifies, just out of curiosity, who verifies this information?
You do.
Who does?
You do, in what, any manner you want.
Okay.
You determine that it's correct.
Okay.
That's what the statute calls for. Now, this is a, a law that, I think it was from the beginning of, of time, uh, that, but at that time, they, there were different accounting procedures, obviously, and the, the treasurer's role was different. You know, there was monies, actual, uh, you know, monies held, coins and everything else, gold and, in the vaults. That's not done anymore. And at that time, the Commissioners' Court could ask for it to be presented, and you would see it on your table and you could count it in front of you, and then it would be put back in the, in the vault.
Hopefully.
So, yeah, so if y'all wanna, you know, take monies from, out of First National Bank and do that, that's, that's...
We can count it.
I think one of the purposes of this, of you bringing this report to us is because then it, you have to do the affidavit.
It's, I don't have to do an affidavit.
Well...
I think that was pretty clear, but...
We have to do it.
We have to do it.
Right.
But I mean, but you're presenting that so that...
To help you. To, to reduce the, the report.
Well, I think probably one of the ways we do it is, is we, um, you ask the budget officer or the auditor to verify by looking at the bank recons on these book balances, that's the only thing we need to look at, just make sure that. The auditor should have information because it gets it from the treasurer, all the disbursements and all the receipts. I'm not sure about the reconciling items that are here, but that's something that should clear out the following month. All these reconciling items, you cannot have a reconciling item, the same amount every single month, every single month. Those things are supposed to be, uh, cleared out subsequent every month. So, I'll get with Javier tomorrow and with, and with Rob, because you all need to look at the bank recons for every one of these and just tick and tie, basically. And then you, then you assert that to the court. Or, you're gonna have each member of the court go to his office and verify these book balances in order, in order to, to sign this affidavit. That's, it's, so it's either we each do it, which is the right thing to do, you know, I mean, in terms of the statute, or we assign the budget officer to go, uh, which probably be either Javier or, or, or somebody from Rob's office to tick and tie these, these reconciliations. That's the only way we're gonna know that they're accurate, having an independent and individual look at it and just tick and tie.
Tick and who?
Tick and tie, just tick it and tie it.
Well, there, there are certain, I think, requirements that'd be done within the same month, so as the report is given to you, so need to do that probably tomorrow morning. It'd be best to do it, I would think, but you need to talk to, to your, uh, legal counsel.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll take care of that, but is there any, is, is there a timeframe from the time that, from the end of the month that we have to be, in other words, in order for us to comply, is there a timeframe, like, within a week or two weeks?
Within the same term, states.
The term is a month.
Which is the same month.
Right, so if, let's say on the 31st, we get these, let's say the 31st at 8:00 PM, we get these things to review...
Well, that's, that's not gonna happen, but...
No, no, but, but hypothetically, then...
Well, I can't, I can't answer hypotheticals because, you know, you, you'll probably have have to ask your legal division on that.
Okay. So you can't answer the question?
I'm telling you that, that from what I've read, it has to be within the same month.
Okay, so my question, second-
Even if I-
Yeah, so if it happens on the thirty-first, as an example, then we have to, I mean, how do we do it, Sylvia? I mean, if, if he comes, let's say that we have a Tuesday meeting on the thirty-first as presented, and we have to do it within the same month, we have to do it at the thirty-first before midnight? That doesn't make sense.
I haven't seen the statute, this is something that Richard worked on, but-
Okay.
I, you know, can gladly tomorrow look at it and try to get an answer for you.